Good question, though. Same with the next one, I think. Adopt standards and land use development ordinances for managing straw market quality and quality, quality and quantity, sorry. New developments that are consistent with state standards. The one after.
Some of that first one, where it just says planning board, are we gonna add in town meeting?
No, because that's creating a map which the town doesn't have to vote on.
The planning board actually map, do the mapping. Do we do that?
State does.
Identifying map areas at risk.
You don't map for all of us.
We don't, we don't do that.
You know what, I think that would actually be the CEO, because doesn't it right before that say that he has to look for places that are included? Somewhere like that. You guys don't look at sensitive areas, do you?
Yes.
Yeah, the habitat maps. I'm gonna add in for that one, too. The top one. Good catch, Jim. All right, where were we? I think we're at the bottom one.
Yeah.
Right? Unless you guys had anything in the first four? Okay, so long-term planning board in town meeting considers stricter protections for the newly identified critical habitats in the RPZ resource protection zone. Accords with state federal guidelines allow complimentary uses in the resource protection zones such as trails and conservation easements.
So what did you put under responsibility for that one on the top?
Planning board and CEO.
You had, you left planning board?
Left planning board and added CEO. That's probably something we'd do together, I would think.
Okay, so then next.
So then, section seven. Like, ten pages. So there's the background. Talks about resources and the maps with the beginning with habitat. So we have, we have to always remember at the meetings, ask, John, have you looked at the beginning with habitat maps? Is this anywhere near any of the habitats? Do you want a habitat map like that? I have asked Carly and Christine to take the maps that Carly now has, because Dave Hennessy had them. I think Bob Reer had them for some reason, and gave them to Dave, and Dave gave them to the town. I have asked that they be put up on the wall. At the last meeting Christine said, oh, that's not happening for quite some time because we're busy. And I just really wanted them tapped on the wall. We can get them like that. Because they will last longer if they're on the wall and not folded up or rolled up somewhere, and they're good references to look at. And I'm guessing that these meetings are also marker. I have no idea. The white marker, whiteboard markers, you could, if you're talking to someone, you could.
That's a dangerous game.
We're not writing on the map. That is. You could whiteboard that marker.
Better get two.
Wait, who said that that was?
Maybe we got a piece of clear plastic for the top.
It looks like it.
Totally could do that. I'll bet a hundred bucks right now, I may think a whiteboard marker that it'll work, and if not, I'll buy any map.
I'm just saying it's more, it's more the proper marker, right?
No, well, we just have it there.
Sure, but still someone's gonna use the wrong marker.
No one's going to write on our maps. No, but I'm just saying, of course, I would never write on, wouldn't, uh.
Susan Andrews, she's gonna, she's gonna write on it.
I would never do that. So, so yes, I've requested multiple times ever since we knew that those habitat maps were there, to have them put on the wall.
How many maps are there? Just one?
Well, so, they came in, and we weren't sure if they were the most current ones because the state will issue new ones.
2016, is that the newest?
Yes.
Okay.
You're talking about the habitat maps, though. So the habitat maps, we have the habitat maps. We weren't sure if they were the most up-to-date or not. So I requested different times for both Carly and Christine that they check them out and make sure that John has the most up-to-date ones because of, yes, to look at them. And I haven't. There's been no movement.
Is it, is it a map? Is it maps?
It's more than one map.
So it's like the shorebird, the whinnybird habitat?
Right, there's the riparian. Yeah, the salamanders, it's riparian, whatever, there's a bunch of them. He should be able to go right, straight to the state map, the state site and find them and get them. You'll have them. Okay. Awesome, that would be great. Let's see. Anything on seven one? There's a match in the title. There's a match in the title. And then, let's see, seven two talks about federal pools. Flood plain. We have the flood plain maps, too, which are bigger, cover the town differently. That probably wouldn't work to have those on the wall.
We got our own flood plain from yesterday.
Right. Anything on seven two?
No.
I'm good on seven.
All right. Anything on seven three? Time on wetlands.
Wetlands. I'll pretty standard, really?
I'm good.
I'm good. True.
All right. Seven four, time on habitats. We're getting back to this inventory analysis with natural habitats has been done through the beginning with habitat. Program of partnership of several state agencies, including the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, Maine Natural Areas Program, and the Maine State Planning Office for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Audubon. So it's basically assessing wildlife and plant conservation priorities and opportunities. Program has mapped information in three different areas to assist the communities in developing a system of protected lands in addition to the habitats noted below. Following beginning with habitat maps are included in this plan. So there's actually gonna be eleven by seventeen life-arming map in this book. So it might even be cool to get little eleven by seventeens of them also, if they're.
And these are the maps here, water riparian, and these are the four?
Yep, those are the four. Those are the four.
And it's twenty.
And then explains what they are. We got the list here. All right, four, seven four and seven five.
Yeah, I agree with all that.
Deer-wintering areas.
On seven five, where's Birchwood Pond?
Birchwood? Where are you?
Deer-wintering areas?
Yeah.
Line three at the end.
Line three of deer-wintering areas.
They are located near the Campbell Pond Road and next to Birchwood Pond. That's supposed to be verge.
Point?
Verge point.
I'm gonna ask where Birchwood Pond is. And the thing is, is he hasn't given us any of the maps yet. If he had the map, we'd probably look that up. Good catch. And then didn't he say that Winnegans is Winnegans? There's Winnegans Lake, and then there's Winnegans Creek, right? Come on. Our map shows it as Winnegans Pond. That's really Winnegans Lake. All right, let's see. Page seven six, anything there?
I wonder if you could do it, there's a grammatical thing on the deer-wintering.
Oh, is that? Okay.
Two of these locations are depicted between Milcove and, I don't think it's depicted.
About it?
I think it's identifying the land, but.
There are you in here.
Like the last line, I think. It's off, it's the third line from the bottom at the very end. Two of these locations are depicted. That would have to reference.
Yeah. Well.
Two of these locations, you could just be R between, just take out depicted.
There is a Birchwood Pond.
There is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I think when they're saying depicted, they're talking about that they're shown on the map there. They're talking about the maps, but I get depicted is weird.
Yeah, 'cause depicted, it's different. If they're saying it's on the map, then the locations are between.
Yeah, the locations are between.
Yeah.
Milcove, Winnegans Creek. Okay. I shall oppose the change. All right. Seven, anything else on seven five? Number one, seven six. We got rare endangered plant species. High-value habitat for U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
On the overboard discharge, I think that's supposed to be two hundred gallons per day, not two thousand.
Good catch, I would not know any better.
Wow, two thousand gallons per day, that's a lot of stuff, isn't it?
I wanna know who the, I wanna know who the expired OBD is.
First four.
Zero, no, it says, it says there's only one that's expired, the zero, zero, one, two, four, six.
They're listed somewhere.
The call to cut off.
Yeah.
Wow, expired in two thousand fifteen. Yeah. Okay, so two thousand is two hundred. Looking at seven seven.
They all look fine today.
Yeah.
It's highlighted uranium. I don't know why it's highlighted. All right, anything on seven seven?
Second paragraph.
Yep. Under erosion and sanitation?
Under nitrogen contamination is the first paragraph of four lines.
Wait, have you?
Oh, I'm on seven eight.
Oh, you're on seven eight.
Seven seven, I'm on seven. I caught you.
I'm like, what? It's getting late, I can't tell where he is.
What? Let's go.
Okay, seven eight. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Your mother's forgotten to spell the R-I-V-E. Bug down the middle of the second paragraph.
You are correct.
You'll prove.
Good catch. All right. Invasive species, invasive plants, comma, aliens to local ecosystems, comma, where they become established, comma, grow rapidly and can be spread by unsuspecting.
I think that's required thing from the state, isn't it?
No.
It's got an asterisk at the end.
Invasives. Doesn't have anything.
That's a.
All right.
That's a big item that, uh.
I know, but it's a clamor of it.
Yeah, that's a lot of commas.
That's a beast of a thing right there. Max has done an amazing job with this. I'm not disparaging him in any way, I just run into little things.
So some of their shape is good today.
And the two of you?
Good.
Yeah.
Sure, seven nine.
A lot of asterisks, a lot of money stuff.
Yeah. A lot of quiet stuff.
I looked through it, I was fine with everything on seven nine.
Gentlemen?
I'm good.
All right. Seven ten, last page.
Well, they talk in here, this whole, this whole section, because they talk about the water quality and so forth, and they got wetlands, so, burnable pools, habitats. And I'm not, I think it's in this section, they talk about new meadows, lake, and low oxygen and bacteria issues. But then, under action plans, I don't see any reference to any action.
Action like what?
To mitigate low oxygen and bacteria issues in the lake.
Why would you do that?
Well, first I had to study it, you know? Figure it out.
True. So you want an action item to study how to fix that?
Well, I think it's a problem. And it was all around across room weather signs and smelling something that smelled like a sewer.
It's probably something sewer, not.
At a certain time in the summer.
I remember days of that, but I don't, I don't lately.
I didn't, I didn't last year.
No. Well, some of it.
Actually, it's just been pretty, you know, and I'm thinking, oh my God, people keep calling us up with this.
There are areas that flat out, and it's, these clamp lats are smelling.
Oh, I know what a clamp lats smell like.
All right, so what are you proposing? So what are you proposing, Jim? You wanna add something to it?
Yeah, an action, an action, uh, something about new meadows lake.
Underwater natural resources.
Uh, yes.
What would you like?
I don't have money for that, I mean, I don't know, but, um, I don't know if you wanna do immediate ongoing or.
We can decide afterwards, what's the?
But under implementation actions, um.
Be it long-term?
Yeah, it could be long-term. Uh, let's see, um. Mitigate, uh, study how to mitigate new meadows lake, low oxygen and bacteria issues. Study how to mitigate new meadows lake, low oxygen and bacteria issues. And there's probably a better way to say it than that.
Low oxygen what? And bacteria problem?
Low oxygen and bacteria.
As for problems.
And issues. Because it's, it's mentioned in the, uh, in the lineup, but then there's no action item.
What page is that mentioned, Jim, longer?
Uh, it's in section, uh.
Phosphorus concentrations, seven seven.
So it's saying that there's high concentration of phosphorus in new meadows?
The algae blooms cause changes in water tend to reduce its ability to hold oxygen, is that what you meant?
Yep.
What is that talking about in new meadows, though?
Exceeding the ability of lake ecosystems to assimilate them.
Is that a Houghton Pond problem? No. It's not Houghton Pond, it's, um. No, 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 I just, um.
And seven eight, the last paragraph?
Campbell's Pond, if you're anywhere near Campbell's Pond, you have to do a phosphorus. You have to do a special plan to mitigate phosphorus because of Campbell's Pond. I think that's what the phosphorus is talking about.
Yeah.
Was it somewhere specifically?
Well, I don't know, I saw it, and it jumped out at me, but I can't now, or I can't pick it out.
Oh, nitrogen contamination, in seven eight.
It says it in that second paragraph.
Yep.
These times of low oxygen, maybe tied to this bad of fish kills.
Nitrogen contamination.
There we have it, right at the end. Once fully titled, a proportion of the matter through, not a good one. I've experienced periodic quality of the box, and occasional algae growths. Due to limited title flushing.
Okay. I just wanted the reference to put in there.
Okay.
And we wanna tag the slide board with that?
I had it.
Yes? I think so, I mean, I gotta look into hiring someone to look into it.
Yeah, I suppose so.
Would we put planning board, too?
Absolutely, we're gonna join us. For lack of words, awesome.
All right. So we went through the whole section, and we went through the whole implementation actions, added one.
If you have a little more section. If we could continue.
It's eight twenty-five. I honestly have enough.
Do you have a next one?
If you guys are, uh, so we're not.
Only one change.
Well, so, there are more sections. We hit one through seven, there is, um. There are twelve of them. So we will need to do this again. I think that this was a really good, good stab at it.
So, there's gonna be twelve sections.
Yeah, there's twelve sections total, and the very last one is land use. There's current land use, and then there's future land use, it's like two sections, and it's, I can't tell you how long it is.
So we have public facilities and services, fiscal capacity and capital investment, transportation and land use.
Right. And land use is twelve pages, I have it right there. Marked at one. Does that useful to you at this point? So, we went through one through seven. What do you guys think so far? Any thoughts?
None.
We're waiting to add, to share your thought analysis on it, Jim. Well, I mean, the, the committee has taken time to go through pretty, pretty comprehensively. But, you know, you get to a point where you just don't see anything anymore.
The meeting that I went to, they were really in-depth on English and, you know, so like, I think they've done a really good job, you know, they were right into it.
Yeah, I mean, and I think you, yeah.
And like you said, you stared at something for long enough eventually, you know.
Yeah, so I mean, this is, this is a really good feedback, and what I'll do is, um, we don't meet again until the twenty-second. I will share.
And I think that's what I have, is we missed a meeting, so we did, we canceled the last Monday's meeting. So what I think's gonna happen at the next meeting is a review of the eight through twelve.
Yeah, that was.
And then, right, we'll get it back again.
Right, so we should, I think we should have. We should have the rest of the sections after the twenties, the meeting on the twenty-second. And then we can decide when we want to meet again. We're trying to get this done, I mean, he said two weeks.
Because then the motion here goes to the state, it's out of our hands.
They'll lay it to them, and they decide whether they put her on. Right.
Who did you talk with about LD two thousand three?
I talked to.
What did so us that? About what was gonna happen on?
My husband heard it today, that they, he thought it was gonna pass on July one.
Really?
What's that mean, gonna pass?
That it was gonna be passed, that they were gonna implement it on July first. Oh my God, I don't know, that's gonna happen. He heard on the radio, something, he came home and told me today. He heard it today.
Well, there was a work session, the last work session on LD two thousand three amendments, and there's three. There's one that postpones it.
Comp, huh?
A year?
Two years.
Two years, one year?
No, just, just one that, it just says two years, but the compromise may be on that one LD to do it one year.
Nine.
Post it. And that looks like it, there's a good chance of that passing.
It should.
But the work session at two today was kind of, and I haven't looked at that.
That was, that was today's session, that?
That was today.
So that, he must have, he, he heard something today, and I don't, he told me as I was walking out the door.
So there's two other bills. One eliminates requirements for all towns, less than ten hours, and they have to go by it.
Right.
And I, I don't have any read on that, but my, my kinda guess is that's not gonna happen.
Because it's not used yet.
That did postpone it to October first, that one. And then the third thing is, I had a couple of housekeeping answers and so forth, and I, and some other things, but they weren't, they were fairly significant, but I don't recall what they were. So presumably, they'll combine all those, and they'll.
And decide, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just not gonna stress about it, we'll wait to see, and then, we talked about it. We talked about it at the last meeting, that, um, we'll just meet before our July meeting and get our head straight on what we're gonna do.
Well, we should know.
Whether it applies, or whether, yeah, I mean.
We should know in the next, I think my next meeting in a week, we should have a real good read on what's gonna happen.
And fortunately.
Right, but it's still, it's, it's not that far off.
No, but I mean, I mean, we can't help it, but then.
Once we know what's gonna happen, then we'll deal with it.
But let's just say none of those pass. That means that the Maine State Planning Office has to do their role making and finish that, because they haven't even, they haven't even completed that.
Right. Which doesn't mean, I don't think they can pull it off by July one, they can't force an implementation without the rules.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's, it's a possibility.
I don't know.
There's one more thing I had.
I think it generates.
Because they want it so desperately, they think it's gonna pass. I do, I mean, I see that, I actually think it's gonna happen.
There's one more thing, and then I'll make it quick.
Okay.
This is, this is the, this is a copy of the Waters and Havilow Ways ordinance. And, uh, the very beginning says, it's, you know, that there'll be a, there should be a committee.
Yeah.
And my understanding is that, uh, to date, there isn't anybody that's been appointed to the committee. So, uh, this would be under section eight, you know, quite. I, I just want you to think about this. There's been a lot of talk around with some people I know, that there should be a Havilow Ways Committee, and it should be involved in, uh, you know, helping to develop and, uh, whatever, you know, those things that are happening on the land, so oyster finishing, moorings, uh, docks, piers, clamming. Not clamming, that's marine resources. You're on that committee, right, Jerry?
No, I am not.
Okay.
I go to meetings.
Okay. But Havilow Ways Committee would have nothing to do with the, the shellfish and all of that. It would be strictly for moorings and, uh, you know, have a plan and this kind of thing.
Isn't, isn't this the one that just got dissolved? Jim and I were talking about it earlier, and I, what, what's the committee that just got dissolved?
Well, we're not a committee. We, we, we don't have a shellfish ward, and we now remove that, and we have, are working with Saginaw County.
Okay.
To be the, um, the resource for.
This is the, this is the shellfish ward?
Right, but, and I think some of this may fall into that, because the harbor master's still around, we still have a harbor master.
We do?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Oh, yeah.
So far, but I know.
We can't connect each other anymore, no.
But I kinda get the impression there's been some talk and so forth about this, so I just wanted to give you a copy of that. It just came off the website today, so this is still, as far as I know, everything's in effect. It's just there's no one on this committee, which is unfortunate, because I think there should be some oversight of the resource.
There is, there just isn't a committee.
There is no committee.
No, that, so, one of the things, one of the things we have, um, working, as part of our new software that we're implementing, I believe there's a mooring component to it, because I said that, um, every mooring that the town registers should be GPS-located.
It's on the form.
And that's, and, um, so that, and it's, and man it, it how is, because we have the software, how to.
It's on the application form, but that, that law will, you know, be shown.
That way, everyone knows where the mooring is, and no one has the right to move someone's mooring.
Right. Jim sounds like a really good chair of that committee.
What's that?
I second that. You sound like you'd be a really good chair of that committee.
All the paper.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know about that.
You have a passion about it, Jim, sure.
You have a vote? You use a town vote. You have a town vote.
I, I have a vote.
Town's gonna vote.
I have, I have four votes, so I'm sure I could, it'd be one of them that.
So we can, um.
Right, but we have a harbor master. But this would be in addition to the harbor master, it's not just a, you know.
So you're saying that this would go with section eight?
Yeah.
Which we'll look at next time. Which we'll look at next time?
Yeah.
Well, because it, because it's the registration of the vote, it's the registration of the mooring, there's pieces that...
Well, in the, in the ordinance, it tells what, what the committee, you know, is supposed to be going and so forth, and there's been some revisions thrown in.
They would be involved in the pier and dock?
Um, well, actually, it does say that in there, that the planning board will be involved in the piers and docks.
I think you guys are not involved in pier. The piers and docks were handed off to the code enforcement officer when it was Ellis, which was, do you remember how long ago that was? That was a while ago.
I don't remember.
Ten or thirteen years ago, 'cause, uh, he wanted to do it, and board members wanted less to do, I guess.
Well, and because it's, because there's, there's state file, there's off, I mean, every time, and there's a ton of, we, I can't find any notification that's ever seen from neighbors building. There's just kind of that going on right now.
Neighbor's building, but docks.
Piers, yeah, you get notified, so...
Yeah.
Why do you get notified?
When your neighbor puts it up here.
Oh, you're a planner?
Yeah.
And there's something in here about...
Because they're all, they're all building, I guess.
Yeah.
Who does what?
About the planning board being involved, it is in the ordinance.
The regular ordinance or the shellfish one?
The new construction of docks and floats, or revision of civil docks and floats, the planning board or designee in the harbor master will require review.
Right.
There may also be a review required by Army Corps of Engineers upon the approval. So there is a thing here about docks and floats.
Well, because I think we, what page is it on? We went, what's it called?
So, what's the word called?
Permit by exception?
Permit by rule.
Permit by rule. So you, you start with the code enforcement for permit by rule, he denies it, and it goes down to the DEP, and that's where the whole application process starts.
Well, it comes under the Natural Resources Protection Act.
Right. But I'm presuming that that language, the designee, in there has probably become the code enforcement officer.
It has, because you're...
So that's your designee.
You look at, you look at the powers and duties, planning board shall administrate, administer these things, okay? Businesses, commercial uses, home occupation, expansion of non-conforming structures, small and energy converging systems, large solar energy systems, communication towers, accessory residential units, all subdivision plans and amendments, all uses in shoreline overlayed zone except conforming residential and associated accessory uses, including driveways and residential docks. So not residential docks, for all uses in the resource protection overlay zone. CEO is administering the land use ordinance for all uses not administered by the planning board, unless the CEO request planning board view. So basically, it says what we do, and whatever we don't do, he does. But it's very specific about the docks and driveways, that we don't do that. So, he's the designee, the CEO.
So, but that's just one thing that probably could be tweaked in that, in this, in this waters and havilys way.
And I had, and I'm glad that, I, I'm glad that we, I vaguely remember that getting voted in at select board, requiring the GPS location to be added to the application, that people track in the computer.
Yep.
So that there's no, yeah, because people mess with those things. So it's, it's, you have the right to say, nope, that's where mine was, and here's the location.
Right.
And it happens, right?
Not at all, not at all.
No, I mean, the language that you have is correct and consistent with the book, he's, the CEO is just the designee. I mean, we can discuss putting it back.
This is, what else is from, it's from the old two thousand fifteen also, so at the same time that the, that went into effect, the old comp plan is when this looks like it was, well, that was two thousand and five, this is a comp plan.
When, when somebody wants to put a dock out, uh, you know, they have to apply the DEP under the Natural Resource Protection Act. There's no permit by rule, it used to be a permit by...
There is a permit by, you start with the, and he says no.
No, you don't, no. It's a full Natural Resource Protection Act permit for dock. There's no more permit by rule for docks, there used to be, but no more. So, you need a full, I've done two in the last couple of years, so, um, so you apply, you do your full application, and it's about eight hundred dollars between public notices and fees and so forth. And then, and you have to do all your plans and figure docks and property lines and boundary survey, and it gets quite a lot. So then you send all of it to the EP, they send a copy to Army Corps of Engineers, and because you have to give a copy to the town.
And all of the Indian tribes as well get a copy.
The Indian tribes get a notice, they don't actually get a, they don't actually...
I think now they give it.
They get the application.
If they want an application, they can have it. It depends on how the DEP is feeling that day, because I've done it both ways.
Are you proposing that we change something in the comp plan for it?
Uh, under, under the next section eight, I think that's what we wanna think about it, but I just wanted you to have a copy of it to go and look at it. Because I do think it's really important, and, uh, and I think it could play a role in protecting, you know, and really looking after that resource. That's, that's, I'm sorry to take another...
No, no, you're fine, and I guess the question is... I guess the question is if there is no committee looking after all that, who is now, Susan?
A harbor master.
I think master does all of that, though.
It's my understanding that the harbor master is the one who, who confirms moorings.
No, but you mean like that whole ordinance, it talks about the committee, so the harbor master now that all of that.
I think a lot of it's not being...
Answer to that.
I don't know.
Well, it's got a, it has the harbor master in his...
The harbor master...
Rules and regulations for moorings. I mean, these, these are really...
He has to approve the moorings.
Right.
Yeah, no, I know that.
The rest of it, I don't know.
No, I, none of it's...
I don't think it's being...
It's not, we have identification, it's the ID number, which you get at the town, the setup, I don't think it's, you're responsible for your adequacy of your mooring. It's for your, suit for your moor, the moored water graph.
So I guess maybe that's just a question for the rest of the select board, maybe a administrator for later.
Yeah, mooring winter storage.
There's no rules on that.
There's what?
There's, there's a mooring winter storage. You, you mean your mooring for winter storage, so there's, I think that's the personal preference.
Your want, your winter stick has to be painted orange, it's in there.
Can I make a motion, let me adjourn?
Second.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, there it is.
So, if I could...
You got the recording?
I sure will.